Debt, fringe benefits, liability insurance, transfers to other funds, and all other budgets, as well as the public library. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Finance, Mr. Tom Robinson, and he's going to guide us through those pages of our budget. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, thank you, Professor Holman-Bransfield. We're going to start on page nineteen.
Thank you, page nineteen.
So this is the Board of Selectmen's Budget. This budget was kept the same this year. There was a consideration to include about $2,500 for beautification. They did not make the final budget there. Currently, no funds in this budget for the beautification. Those were, we were expecting to put those, if they were to be there, we're going to put them as part of the program services line item of the Board of Selectmen's Budget. Page twenty-one.
I will say for our viewers, if I could interrupt you for just a second, Tom, the budget is available at www-portlandct.org, and you can follow along if you can. So, sorry to interrupt, Tom.
No problem, thank you. Page twenty-one is the first Selectwoman's Budget. The, this budget has made up of the increases related to payroll increases, and the Council of Small Towns had a fee increase. It's their first fee increase in numerous years, and you can see that in line eight-six-zero-zero-four. Page twenty-three is the Ethics Commission. There is no increase and no change to this budget. Page twenty-five is the Probate Budget. There's a slight decrease. This is an amount provided by the courts, and they tell us our allotment. Page twenty-seven is the Elections. You will see a 9.23 percent increase in this budget. This is a presidential election year referendum. We expect a large turnout for the, the election for president, and at one point, we had this a little bit higher. As you can see, in eighteen-nineteen, we spent around forty-one thousand, but we're hoping that we can get this completed within that forty thousand, two fifty. Page twenty-nine is the Finance Department. The Finance Department, we had issued our unqualified opinion for our financial statements for June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, by December. We did hold some townwide auctions, and I have assistance with the Vehicle Maintenance Department, and Kevin Armstrong from the IT Department, Dave Krasinski from the IT Department helped us with that. We've assisted multiple departments with running and administering the programs with the bond issuance from the two thousand and eighteen, and we've helped with some various other grants programs. I also work with the Board of Ed, and my team works with the Board of Ed, and we helped with the Portland High School Learning Cafe improvements, the boiler replacements at Valley View, and we're working on insurance claim improvements for the sprinkler system at the biz, and worked with Public Works and the Buildings and Grounds Division of the schools for the improvements on the tennis courts. Our budget is, here is mostly contractual with salary. There was a change in personnel in one of the long-term retirement of Sally Wosso. I'd appreciate her and all her hard work for numerous years in our department, and there's been hiring there, so the increase was not as much as a new employee. Page thirty-one is the Collector of Revenue. The increase here is based on contractual items, and the service contracts with our Quality Data Solutions System. They, that is what kind of makes up this budget. It's one employee, the Task Collector. Her collection rate was ninety-eight point seven for June thirty, two thousand and nineteen. Very strong collection rate. The Assessor has the, this is page thirty-three. The Assessor's Budget is made up of contractual for salary, and the employee for the Assessor, half of a clerk, and a couple different service contract items. There is some on buying field card database service agreement increases that are a part of this budget. Page thirty-five is the Board of Assessment Appeals. There is no change to this budget, and this is not a revale year where it's completed, so this is the lower cost. Next year's budget will be the one with the revale year. Page thirty-seven is Town Council. Town Council does, definitely does fluctuate year to year. We have certain years, we are, been much higher than eighty-five thousand. Nineteen, we had a very good year with it. This year, getting more in line. So we were leaving that eighty-five thousand number and hoping that it does work out for us. Page thirty-nine is the Town Clerk Budget. You will see a decrease there. There's been staff changes. One of the long-term assistant employees had moved on, and we have seen some savings in that line item. Page forty-one, Essential Services. This budget will remain the same. This is where we buy our goods that we share throughout the town, and then hold our copier feet, as well as our postage for the town, advertising for printing, and publications, all legal notices for the town run through here, and our office supplies and copier, printing supplies and cartridges agreements go through here. Page forty-three is our Technology Budget. This is increases related to some salaries. We also made a change in our vendor for our Level Three support. In nineteen, we were working through that process, so we did not engage in as many projects as we would have liked to, and did. So we have made a change in that, and we are working through, and the IT Department's making some good progress on some projects that are going on. And that is what's going on in that budget. And we did, we did also that year, last year, we did, through capital, we did acquire a system that we use as a backup system for our data files, that is a system that we do need to get in a habit of refunding, meaning to put money back into the capital plan annually. It's around a total, around a forty-five thousand dollar fee. It probably occurs every four years. So there's a slight amount of money that we put in this year, but we really, we need to get back into focusing on that over the next two years, as it'll probably renew again in two more years. Page forty-five is the Fire Department. You, we tried, the, the firemen who respond to a certain level of calls get a stipend. We tried to increase that stipend in this budget to sixteen hundred dollars. It was fifteen hundred dollars. There was slight increases to the Assistant Chief and some of the EMS coordinators. There was the Fire Chief and the Deputy Chief asked to not take increases so that we could make that, so there was no increases to the Fire Chief and the Deputy Chief. We did see some electricity savings with some of the improvements that have been made to the firehouses. So that's a total of a point three-six percent increase. Page forty-seven is the Fire Marshal's Office. This is just an increase more or less for salaries, and there was a small decrease in the equipment supply line. Page forty-nine is the Emergency Dispatch. This is our contract with Dispatch, as well as our monitoring of our facilities. Quarry heights and the schools are part of this agreement for the alarms. And also is what is in this, is the Regional Medic Dispatch Agreement, and they are a portion of that. Page fifty-one is the Police Department. You'll see there is a four point one-eight percent increase in totality. We got up slightly in the police private duty. There's, based upon the various projects, there could potentially be a need for more private duty, though that is a continual item that gets assessed, that seems to get assessed all the time. So we're, you know, if, if some of the larger projects come through, then we might have to do a supplemental appropriation on revenue and expense like we've had to do in the past. But we did try to increase it by about twelve thousand five hundred here. Salaries increased based on contractual. We do have various few new employees that knew for maybe three or four years, so they are on the step pattern. So you do see a little bit higher level of increase in the regular payroll based upon the step level of the agreement, where in past years, we had had people maxed out at the tap step. So we have people within the steps, numerous police officers. Page fifty-three is the Emergency Management. The Emergency Management Team has done a lot of nice work that you can see on page fifty-two outlined, but we, they have not been asked, they have, did not get any increase here. There is a partial reimbursement back from the FEMA for a portion of the funding here in this budget. The Building Department is, just the increase in this budget is based upon salary. It has a full-time employee and part of a assistant. And the assistant is full-time, but she's split between this budget and the planning budget. We're going to skip ahead now to page seventy-three. Seventy-three is the Planning Department. That has about a two point nine-five percent increase. The Department includes the other half of that assistant that we spoke of. It includes a thirty-hour for Economic Development Planner, and a Land Use Administrator, thirty hours of that as well. So thirty hours for Economic Development and Planning Helper Assistant Administrator, I should say, and a Land Use Administrator. The Land Use Administrator has resigned recently. This position will need to be rehired.
Tom, can you go over that again? What's the regular payroll line at twenty-seven thousand?
The regular payroll is a half of the assistant that is split between the Building Department and the Planning Department, and the part-time payrolls are the two administrators. All set?
Yeah, now is this taken into account that we're going to have a vacancy there?
No, this is, this was done prior to the knowing of this, and so this is assuming that there is a thirty-hour position for the Land Use Administrator and a thirty-hour position for the Economic Development Planner located within the part-time payroll. If there is any change in the personnel style, then clearly there would have to be an adjustment within the budget if we do that prior to completion. Otherwise, you know, they've tried to need to fit within their budget. But, you know, people would be charged appropriately to the appropriate line item as they're hired. Page seventy-five is the Zoning Enforcement Office. Dan Burey, who is our Zoning Enforcement Officer, has accepted a full-time position with Old Lime. He will assist us in the transition. We want to thank him for his years of service, so this position will need to be refilled. Page seventy-seven is the Planning and Zoning Commission. There is limited to no change in this. So this is more or less the budget of the LCAG, and then the amounts for court transcriptions as needed, and the Board Clerk. The Zoning and Board of Appeals, which is page seventy-nine, there is no change. Page eighty-one, which is the Inland Wetlands Commission. This is a no change. This is a payment for the contractor, for the enforcement officer, and then Board Clerks and the, a payment to the Coastal Conservation, CT Coastal Conservation District. Page eighty-three, the Conservation Commission. There is, looks like a large increase in percentage, but it's just a slight increase in the Board Clerk monies that are needed that just result in a, it looks like a large increase, but it's very small. Eighty-five is the Economic Development Commission. There is an increase here in the Marketing and Program line, as well as the Board Clerk line, as there's some items ramp up with the commission. There seems to be more need for the clerk to perform the clerk's tasks. And in addition, they're trying to enhance the marketing program, which would be an expansion of the sign program within the town. That's signage that's on Main Street that's been hit and damaged over the years and kind of worn with the weather conditions, as well as under the, in our, under the, as you said, under the bridge area into our industrial park area. And so they try to work on those types of signage. Yes?
What's, what's the Board Clerk? Is that the person that takes the notes at the meetings, or?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
They take the notes, they do the minutes. Page seventy-seven is the Capital Commission. There is no change to this budget. Page ninety-nine is the Chatham Health District. At the time, this was the health budget that was proposed by Chatham Health, and this is the number that they have asked for. Obviously, with the current health crisis, we'll have to see how that all plays out. This is the amount that was asked for.
Tom, it says the budget's based on a per capita rate. How do they calculate that? Is it population in the town?
Population within the groups within the Chatham Health District, the various towns.
The towns are listed there, Mike. It's Colchester, East Haddam, East Hampton, Hebron, Marlborough, Portland, and of course, did I say Colchester?
Yes.
And I'm on the Health Board, and this increase is, is based on our per capita, but it is pretty much across the board. That's pretty much what the percentage increase is at this point.
Thank you. Page ninety-one is defunct, so we'll skip past that. Page ninety-three is the Social Services. The majority of items here have remained the same. We did reinstate the Middlesex Behavioral Health as they were taking kind of out of the budget and probably should not have been last year. There's a little confusion on that one sometimes because there's, it used to be called the Family Access Network, and then for the sake of the linking purposes, we changed that to the Middlesex Behavioral. So it is currently now acting as the Middlesex Behavioral line item. But that is the same, other than that change.
Is that oh-oh-eight? You're talking about the second line down?
That is eight-six-oh-one-nine, Fam Access/Middlesex Behavioral. It was budget, in eighteen, they got five hundred dollars. Last year, they didn't receive any budget, none in twenty, and they requested it for two thousand and twenty-one.
Tom, another question. Would this be the budget, let's assume that the crisis that's going on right now continues out, would this be the budget where we would apply funds to helping residents in town that are either homeless or have issues or whatever? Like, what, what, what this applies to residents in town that may have issues? Is this what funding?
This is, this is, this, this budget funds the social service networks that help our residents within town with the various, with various issues that they may have. It also incorporates the Dial-A-Ride and Rural Transit Program for busing, for busing for the population. It includes the payments for our fireworks support that we provide, the Historical Society and the fair. It does our veterans activities that we do for various support for veteran activities within the town. It's the Wreaths Across America, some other times when there's, that sometimes they've spent care packages as needed to the veterans. There's Memorial Day Parade that goes on in this, and then there's the Connecticut Emergency Shelter. And our emergency shelter is sometimes where we have put people up in various hotels. So that's more or less the line eight-seven-zero-zero-four is where we help people that may be displaced, I guess is the right term to say.
And I guess that was the line I was looking at. I don't know if we anticipate, because I'm asking a question to the Board, will we anticipate that we would have additional needs with everything that's going on right now? Or would we be able to handle that with the emergency appropriations should be done?
I think you could look at contingency as a potential, or you can increase this line item.
I think there's partners, right, Susan, within the community to help the homeless area?
St. Vincent de Paul Place in Middletown helps us quite a bit. And also the Connection also provides some emergency shelter. But Mike, as you said, if it becomes a situation where people need to be placed and they have no money, then they could come to the town. If our regional partners aren't able to help us, then that could be a real challenge. Good point.
Thank you.
Who wants to add with that page? Page ninety-five is the Senior Center. Not, not too much of a change in this budget. In line thirty-one-hundred, the service contracts, that you see a two thousand dollar increase in that line item. And that's for an electronic sign-in system. It's an annual fee for that service. It'll help getting the individuals that are signing into this, getting quality numbers for, for the Senior Center so that they have that information for various reporting requirements and grant reporting. It helps them to achieve better, better information for just their various filings and grants. Page ninety-seven is Administration Eligent of the Elderly. This is where you see a lot of, you know, the newer bus, and we have the two buses, or one bus and a van, and then the vehicle out there that we use. And they, they, the, the request for this budget was at thirty thousand dollars from the Director. When you, if you look at what they're currently spending, they're far, going to over exceed their twenty-three thousand allotment. And we spent something that we've talked about in various meetings, and you'll see that that is, that they will exceed that line item. But in this budget, the, well, it was budgeted at twenty-five thousand, so it's just something that you may want to consider on this line item if there's a, there was, has been requests for more. We did lower the gasoline, trying to make the increase. Not as substantial, obviously, to drive a bus, you need the gasoline and diesel. So we did lower that somewhat to try to even it out, and hopefully we'll be able to achieve, you know, this, this number within the budget. But, you know, you may want to consider the, the service there if that's something you want to do.
Tom, question. Are, have, I don't know when you put these fuel numbers in, but have you given thought to the fact that fuel is down dramatically?
Yeah.
Probably going to stay that way for a while?
Well, as, as you guys, as the Boards instructed me always, you know, watch it and watch it, and we had, we had watched it, and it had significantly dropped at one point during the early onset of this crisis. And we did lock in a value at that amount that was reasonable at the time, being at the level. Obviously, now it's dropped somewhat here. The markets have kind of fallen out. So we do have a, a price that's locked in, so that, these are the rates that we feel are the reasonable to those amounts locked in.
So you did essentially pre-buy for next year? What about how it works? Like, your lock-in goes for how long a period roughly?
You go out to bid, right? During the bid cycle, and then, and then you, we generally lock in for July to the June of the next year.
Okay.
So we had the current year, we already had that already handled. That's locked in from
Right.
very strong, and then this one, we were, it was quite high for a while. We locked in the amounts right around the initial first big drop when it seemed to drop substantially, which it did, and that's the price that we
So my question is, we're set now for July one?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Page ninety-nine is the Library. Was it, question?
No, we're just joking. It's like buying stocks. You know, you never know when to jump in.
Library, it's a one point nine-eight percent. Obviously, there's a lot of exciting things going on to Library right now. We have the large construction project going on, and hopefully that will work out. This has the library staffed at its current level, at its current part-time employees. The increases within this are mostly waged based on contractual, and there was some electrical savings that we had seen, so we did take that number down slightly. And an overall one point ninety-eight percent increase to the budget.
Tom, one question on that quick. With the closing of the Library, what do you think the impact will be on this budget? Will it be positive or negative with the temporary closing?
On this budget?
Yes.
I don't think it's going to make a whole lot of difference because you're
Want me to ask again?
Yeah.
Let me ask again, Tom. With the closing, temporary closing of the Library while they're renovating, what kind of impact will it have on the budget? Neutral, plus, minus, what's your best guess?
Well, I think you're going to lose out on fine revenue, which is the revenue, any revenue stream that you had, you're losing out on. Employee, the employees have been reassigned within the Library, you know, within the Library budget, staying employed and doing their work. You have construction working there, so I mean, the electricity is being utilized, the HVAC is being utilized. They're still, you know, purchasing books and things of that nature and getting them, you know, ready for when it does reopen. So I don't foresee it, I hope you don't see it more from the use of the electricity, you know, doing the construction. But I don't, I don't think you're going to see a lot of impact other than maybe a little bit of revenue loss on the fine situation.
And that's pretty, pretty good substantial anyways.
That's right, it's not a very big generator. I mean, I think from, the Library itself has like a, they have their own special revenue fund for things that are helped by the, the friends of the Library. I think you might see, that that probably sees a little bit more of a hurt than the general fund would because they have more activity going on there.
Thank you, Tom.
No problem.
So could I speak on a couple of items? With regards to fines, they have been having discussions about the idea of waiving fines because this is becoming common amongst the libraries in the area. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised if they approach us at some point talking about waiving fines. So I don't know where, I, I don't know when that will happen, but there was discussion. They haven't reached a final decision, but that is one of the things they're talking about. The other thing that I've advised them to do is to diligently work through to really get a sense of what the increases are with regards to online usage because they have a system that's a lot more usage, where people are accessing media online. And, you know, obviously, that's a trend that they're seeing, you know, so it's, I told them, you know, again, it comes down to having really good data and tracking for us to have a better understanding how those, those resources are being used, so. It's, because I think some of the funding is coming out of, they're getting funding from other sources, maybe friends of Library, I think, might have provided some. I'm trying to think of where it came from. And so at some point, that might be something we may see coming our way because they may want to change their sources of funding with regards to how people are accessing media.
So to just expand upon that, so if you look at page ninety-eight there on the left side, it says that they added digital media to the line item disk video and digital media. So they did put a request in on that item to increase that slightly. But we did just put in what, what made this budget. So that's the line item that they were looking to increase, like you said, but it didn't get increased as much as they were looking for.
Yeah, and we had, and I had said, I mean, you know, you should probably change the, you know, we talked about the renaming of that line because it is changing, the nature of how people are using the material has changed, so you should reflect it more accurately to what is the basis of how it is. So that's good, that was changed.
Thank you. I know it's now seven-thirty, so we need to begin the other meeting, Susan, so.
Is there a motion to take a recess from the public hearing so that we can convene the Board of Selectmen meeting, and then we will recess that meeting? And then we will recess that meeting and come back to this meeting.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, I am recessing the public hearing. So now I will open, for purposes of following our protocol, the Board of Selectmen regular meeting. And the first item is a pledge of allegiance. If you'd all stand, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So I would ask for a recess of the Board of Selectmen meeting so that we can return to the public hearing.
And that we recess the Board of Selectmen meeting so we can return to the public hearing.
Is there a second? Seconded by Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. So we'll go back to the public hearing and complete the work that Tom has prepared for us. Tom?
Okay, thank you. So page one oh one is the employee benefit line item. So in this line item, page one, account number one nine zero zero four, termination benefits. You will see that we dropped that a little bit this year, quite a bit, and for this budget. And that was because we expect less terminations due to the not, it's not an early retirement year. So periodically within the defined benefits, there's an early retirement incentive. Fiscal year twenty was that, fiscal year twenty-one is not. Actuarially, valuations are done for the police, town and fire pensions for the, the, that component that's the DB driven. That is a good portion of your accounts, twenty-three oh one and twenty-three oh two, twenty-three oh three. Also in addition, in twenty-three oh one, which is the town pension contributions, there's the six percent for all the newer members that are in the DC plan. In thirty-seven oh two nine, the collective bargaining, this is where we do our OPEB valuations for other post-employment benefits. This is an OPEB year in twenty-twenty-one, so that will be required to be done. Medical insurance is bitted, has a potential change in carrier. The contractual changes to the health plan were made during some of the negotiations. So you do see some of that savings with, within the medical line where it's not as, near, not as much of an increase as it would have been. Page one oh one is the risk management. This is where we have our liability, auto and personal, auto and personal property coverage. This also is where we have our insurance for the airline trail agreement that we have as well as some, some policy limits that we increased this year in twenty to change our policy limits, that's continued. So that is the increase within this budget. Page one oh five is debt service. Debt service this year has a ten percent increase. This is the first year of the principal payment for the general obligation bonds of two thousand eighteen. So you'll see the principal payment of four twenty-five with an interest payment of three fifty-eight. And then this is the fourth year of our multi-year lease from two thousand eighteen.
Tom, I have a quick question on that, just to help me understand. I know there's the, the bond and the interest payments for, for the bond, the principal and interest. What, where do the costs of the administration of the bond servicing, where are those applied in? So the company that helped us get the bonds, the, the group that does that, where does that cost fit into this?
Can you, can you give me a little more of what you're asking?
When, when we, when we secured the bonds for either the park or other ones, there was a certain amount, I think we had talked about, for the
Closing costs?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had incorporated that.
And those other fees.
Okay, so that, that was, if you see that in eight, three oh five miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous?
That's where that was last year. And now that's back down to zero, one thousand for, so that there's no additional cost.
Up front, it's, it's done.
Yeah, you pay it all up front with, with the closing costs, so that's how that's all handled.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes.
So where will that bond principal number go next year? It's too hard for you to really, you'd have to do some analysis of that. So it's
I don't have that information with me.
Do we anticipate it goes down or?
I don't have that information with me.
That's fine.
Page one oh seven is our near-fund transfers. So I'll skip to only a couple of, well, I guess I could do a couple that are on that page. So animal control we'll go, we'll discuss, we'll discuss youth service. The other, the other is that you see a decrease there. We were making contributions into the school construction fund that has been paid down. That was a, an overage of a, of a band payment that had been made from that fund and we've been paying that back since prior to a band, I was here, so this has been paid down now. And now you, this is just the amount that is going into the water fund for the fire hydrant amounts. And then we will, the, the capital amounts, we'll talk next time and we will discuss park and rec. So, that being said, page one nineteen is animal control. Animal control has revenue that's generated from the rental agreement with Middletown. Also it has some sale of dog licenses and a transfer in from the general fund. The expenses for the animal control shelter are one regular full-time employee. We have part-time employees that cover on the weekends or if the other employee is not able to be there. There's overtime for sometimes the full-time employee when they need to come in when the part-time people are not available. And then there, the costs there, they have more or less stayed more or less the same for the operational. In nineteen, under equipment repair, we did make some improvements to the back of the facility and you'll see, you'd see that there. Page one eight twenty-four, youth service. Youth service had a grant called the State of Connecticut Miscellaneous. That was a program that was a Department of Labor program for the summer youth. That really has not come into play too much with us lately, so that has been removed from the budget of revenue source. The DCF has now running the main youth service grant, it used to be the Department of Education. There seems to be a slight increase expected for the enhancement grant next year in this. The DSS proceeds come from the CRC operations and that's the payments from, that we receive for that, that counselor's work. He bills the DSS and then they come back and pay us. The program fees, we're anticipating an increase, you know, that to be closer to the nineteen year, assuming the full participation in this program for the school year. And then we have the transfer, the transfer from the general fund. The expenses are, regular payroll is our youth service director. The temporary payroll are the employees that help run the program. And then the, the remainder of the expenses have all more or less remained consistent. The C, the total budget there is a two points seven nine budget. Lastly would be the parks and rec fund. Parks and rec fund has, gets some property rentals from the various properties in town. They have their, their various programs that they run, so they're trying to get the revenue. The revenue where it becomes difficult, it seems, is the summer playground programs. That is a revenue source that we were, we try to achieve that, but it seems like it's hard to get to that number. But that's one of the areas that we would wanna look at and, and review. Expense-wise, it has the two, the director and his assistant, the team payroller, the people that do the programs in that area. The ninety thousand dollars, that's a tough number for him to meet there. It probably would be a better, at a, at a higher number, obviously, but then that would probably have a direct effect on the transfer from the general fund. So that would be something to look at. It's, it's a tough number to get at, especially with the increase in minimum wage continuing. We have electricity and water and sewer somewhat budgeted for an increase in usage based on the various parks. So that is something that once they're in play, we'll see if it, if we're close to these numbers or if we're very far, you know, if the expenses are very far above these numbers. The program activity expenses are what the director puts in for what they determine to be their programmatic cost of how to run their programs. And that's what I have tonight for you for the town.
Any questions for Tom or things you may want him to get more information on for our next workshop next Tuesday?
I, I have, I have one question, just for more information, you probably can't answer this, but this on the park and recreation budget. There's a six thousand dollar amount for softball. And I know that it looks like there's fees for the softball and then there's a cost offset for the expenditure. Could you just ask, and see, ask Nate, is that six thousand dollars for fees to play or is it a fee to use the field?
Each team contributes, each team pays fees to play in the league.
Cause I noticed there's also an electricity thing there too, so that must be for the lighting. But if you could ask Nate.
Electricity is not for softball. Electricity is, but electricity, yeah, but I mean, it's not, that, that, it's, it's to play the game and then the softball is for like the umpires, for the balls and the supplies, you know what I mean? But it's not like the ball.
So there's no fee to use the field, it's just for referees and balls?
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying we're not necessarily trying to cover all the electricity
Right.
and all those costs. But there's a fee for, there's a, they're trying to break even that event.
Right.
On the, what they're spending on the outlay to run the softball activity, which would be the games, the activities, the balls and that nature. And then to bring in revenue to offset that component. I don't, it's not factoring in all the other ancillary costs.
Okay.
And it doesn't, it just barely breaks even if it does.
Right, and I can see that.
I mean, I think that's one, honestly, that you, as you, as you move forward, it's gonna, it's gonna be something that'll probably be fun.
So it looks like the cost, or the fee that people play to play, is, it covers the referees, the equipment, the balls. But there's no cost to use the field?
I believe that's the, the fee to use the field is that cost.
Okay.
To cover the, to cover, the fee, the fee to, the fee to play
Yeah.
covers the umpires, the balls. The other items that you're talking about, I do not believe they're part of a
Okay, alright, thank you.
And we can get, we can ask Nate on that for more information. But I mean, that's one of those programs that if it continues within the town, you know, it, it may be something that the town would need to, you know, fund a little more of that because it's hard, there's not many, there's not many participating teams and the costs are more or less constants, who being, you must pay the umpires and you must have the, the balls and the
Sure.
you know, those type of things that you must have in place so that it's a, a fair, a fair activity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom? Ray? Question for Tom. That, is it realistic that the payroll is actually down for park and recs? And yet the hourly rate that I think we're gonna have to pay just by state mandate for minimum is going up? Just curious, I mean, it, it seems like the payroll numbers with everything going up are kinda modest. Is it cutting hours or how's he gonna live within, you know, his team recreational payroll? Is that realistic that he's gonna be able to commit at ninety thousand because minimum wage is going up?
Right, like I said earlier, the ninety thousand number is very difficult for him to achieve. And I think that should be something that could be looked at. As you can see, it's been a hundred thousand for actual, a hundred and eight thousand for actual. We've budgeted ninety thousand, we've left ninety thousand because the only other offset's gonna be an increase to the general fund.
Okay.
So if you would like to increase the transfer in from the general fund, because the other, there's no other revenue source at this point to do that, then that would be, and could it, could, could you probably, you probably could or should, but is that something that we wanna do? In this budget, it's not, as you see, it would be very difficult, I think, for him to meet that number at, as we've had trouble and the, the minimum wage continues to rise.
And then even the regular payroll?
Those were unknown numbers at the time, we had estimated last time and now this is a more of a known number.
Okay.
We had, we had not had people completely hired at the time of last year's budget.
And how many of the employees have medical insurance? Cause that's a pretty
Two.
Two?
Or, or two are eligible for it, whether they have it or not, the two are eligible. One may or may not take a waiver, I don't, room a call that.
So if, if somebody takes a waiver, is that twenty-eight thousand five hundred likely to go down?
I'm saying, I'm not, I can't recollect off the top of my head what's in the twenty-eight five hundred number. Which person it is, but I mean, it's, it's what is the actual of what is occurring now plus the increase in fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tom?
Tom, one last question, I promise.
No problem.
On page thirty-seven, town council.
Yes, sir.
Just a general question, does that include all of our legal fees for all the various things that we might use? It looks like it is, I just wanted to kinda confirm so.
Oh, I mean, all is, that's a difficult question to say all. It's the majority of them, I will say definitely. All pension plan activities may have fees that would be charged directly to the pension plans
Okay.
if they were required, if it's not a negotiation, if it's actual question within the plan. Obviously there's fees, the Board of Ed has their own attorneys, so there would be fees there. If there was programmatic activities, a, a specific program, a specific grant that was maybe charged to the specific fund, the, the water and sewer departments may have legal expenses charged to it. So in the general fund, this is where the majority of the expenses are, but I'm not gonna tell you that that's all. But for labor and pension matters, that's where they go, except for if you're able to charge pension matters to the actual plan.
That answers my question, thank you.
Anybody else? An option to adjourn the workshop?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.